So it's 5:30 on Monday and the fire is staying within the containment lines we established last night. We established our objectives, where we wanted to keep the fire within the boundaries. Crews actively worked throughout the day, through the heat hours of the day and the winds, and actively battled fire within those boundaries. And things, now that the weather has cooled down, the winds have subsided, as of right now, things are looking better on the fire line. But crews continue to be out there actively engaged, continue to, crews continue to arrive at the incident and we put them to work.
As we continue to work cooperatively with the state to mitigate the fire and when we get the fire contained to a degree, we'll be focusing on the recovery and repopulation portion of the event, working with our stakeholders and trying to get everybody back into their homes safely and provide a safe environment for them.
And do you have any kind of handle on structure damage at this point?
We haven't done any initial damage estimate yet. Still kind of trying to clear the safety for the firefighter's safety, the utilities, power poles, trees, lines down, trying to get things re-energized. They'll probably start, they did probably some of that today and then tomorrow they'll be focusing on that ID, correct?
Yes.
Well, thanks. Thank you everybody for coming out. We're so blessed, we haven't had more loss of life. Just want to thank everyone who helped to get the evacuations done, as most of you know this started very early in the morning. Kudos to obviously our firefighters and law enforcement for helping to get people out and safe. We're going to be inconvenienced for a little while, but we're going to come back now. Okay? So if you're lucky enough not to know me, my name is Russ Perdok and I'm the mayor of the city of Clear Lake currently. I would like to introduce some key folks here tonight that have been working through the night and early morning and day. Councilmember Phil Harris, he's been up at the command center. Councilmember Joyce Overton, she's been here getting this ready for us. Bruno Sabatier, Bruno where are you? There you are. Racing around and I think, where's Nick? There you are, Nick, Nick Bennett. Other people in the, I'm sorry? He was at City Hall, yes absolutely. And Bruno and I were kind of running around trying to answer questions for folks, much like we're going to try to do here for you tonight. And we've got the key people that can give you their straight shot and the straight news. Again, this is probably going to take us a little bit. We have major destruction out in the west side of the city, a lot of evacuations and loss there. We don't have a number of houses and I'll let the professionals talk about that. I'm going to try to emcee this. If you have questions, if you guys want to take questions from the floor, just get the information out and we can kind of answer questions later. So if you can just hold your questions, this is really impromptu, we're still working the incident. We want to get you the information you need to know so you can prepare for your lives for the next day, three days and a week. First, I'd like to introduce Deputy Chief Mike, is it Canancio?
Close. Ciancio.
Ciancio, I got close. From the North Shore Fire District, he's going to give us a brief overview on what we know about the origin of the fire, how it got started, where it got started and where we are. So come on up, Mike.
Good evening. This started in a North Shore Fire District at approximately 0:45 hours last night. And as you know, there were multiple incidences already started, both in Lake County and also in the surrounding counties. So resources were stretched thin. When I arrived there, first at scene on Sulfur Bank Road, the fire was approximately 75 acres already. Wind was sustained at around 40 miles an hour and gusts up to about 50 probably. Fire was on both sides of Sulfur Bank, around the Elam and also up the hill and it extended up Sulfur Bank Drive towards the split Sulfur Bank and North Drive. As my first resources came into there, we were most concerned with life safety and the evacuation of the immediate houses on the Elam and the surrounding areas and then getting Lake County Fire District started in the evacuations on this side of the hill because we knew what the wind was doing and where it was going to go. From there, we started a unified command with Battalion 1417, Mike Wink, Chief Wink here. And at that point, we started together running the incident and as resources came in, we put them to work, mostly with life safety as we did throughout most of the night and into early this morning. Mike?
So about a half hour or so into the incident, I joined Deputy Chief Ciancio as a unified incident commander, as it's in both of our jurisdictions. We reconciled the resources we're at scene. We established the leader's intent, which was a life rescue of any folks in harm's way, followed by evacuations, followed by then public safety, first responder safety and fire suppression. Right away, first CH, Sheriff's Department unit at scene, we drew a box for notification via phone of the evacuations in the general area. We then came up with a resource order and ordered resources based on a rapidly expanding incident that we had in front of us. As those resources came, trickled in through the night, they were actively engaged in rescue and fire suppression as they came in through the morning and all through the day. Everybody that came in was actively involved and as soon as the rescues and evacuations were over, or subsided, they're actively involved all day and will be through the night on fire suppression and containment. We established control objectives, we established a box that is our priority to keep the fire within that box. We think it's a realistic goal and that is our leader's intent for all those resources coming in. When they're going out and doing those rescues, evacuations and fire suppression, they know, they get a briefing, they know what that box is and that's their priority. As of right now, we have approximately 235 firefighters at scene, all of the Lake County Fire Departments and the Mendocino National Forest firefighting resources are at scene, actively engaged in the firefight. We have a LEAP out there with the Sheriff's Department doing animal evacs and I'm sure Sheriff Martin can expand on that. And there's no agency in the county that, we needed them here, Public Works, Caltrans, Clear Lake PD, Sheriff, everybody was right there. We didn't even have to ask them to come. Everybody came, everybody was doing what they were supposed to do in a difficult situation with extreme wind conditions and a rapidly expanding incident.
Hi, my name is Willis Sebena, municipal fire chief. Got in the incident a little bit late. Actually, we had a, about an hour before, two hours before this started, we had an immediate need request to Napa County. We were actually in the Yountville area. The call broke loose, I was able to clear that. So I was a little behind the curve, thanking my brothers and sisters that did an amazing job of getting this thing coordinated on arrival, met with the unified command, we looked at our goals and objectives, looked at the box that was measured, came back with, it was from city officials, identified what our needs were going to be for the next operational period, made the request orders as we needed, already talked about how we're going to look at the repopulation, recovery efforts and then just really kind of supported the incident. Throughout today was working with all the stakeholders, Sheriff's Department, Clear Lake PD, Public Works to make sure that we maintain containment controlment, perimeter security for people's residents around the area with a high focus on life safety. We'll continue to monitor and keep our crews out there throughout the night. We've already begun to look at what our repopulation plan would look like, our recovery efforts, working with the Sheriff's Department Office of Emergency Services and other stakeholders. We are still in a very critical fire season. We still need to pay attention to our surroundings at all times and make sure that we're prepared at all times to be able to relieve and evacuate. We do have two shelters open. The first is Twin Pine, they are already at capacity. The other is Grace Church in Kelseyville. We most likely won't look at a repopulation of that area until a lot of the life safety components have been addressed. And that's everything from what we refer to hazard trees, hazardous materials, baby in people's yards, the power poles, the utilities, a lot of those things go into the repopulation part of it. So it's a little bit of a delay when you look at the repopulation. We look at the fire part of it that is safe to repopulate that area, but there's still part of that fire we have to maintain security for and life safety purposes. So some of the areas that should open up because it's kind of common sense, the reason we aren't able to secure those other areas or identify those life safety hazards. In the repopulation, it'll be a multitude of local, state and possibly federal agencies depending upon how this declaration goes between Lake, Napa, Sonoma, Mendocino Counties and other adjacent counties. But as you see with all of us, we're here united today and we will be here for the long haul. The fire seasons that we've seen since 2012, since I promoted, have been profoundly different than anything we've seen. And we talk about defensible spaces and we look at Santa Rosa. So we definitely encourage defensible spaces. That still doesn't guarantee that we're going to be able to save your homes. And it really was paramount to enter over Mount San Llana last night to see the fire burn from Calistoga to Santa Rosa and to hit Highway 29 and see all of Atlas Peak, which I was on the original Atlas Peak fire of '81 as was Chief Barr Shiani. And then to roll into Yountville and see the amount of fire is just devastating to see the amount. And so we really need to pay attention to fire season this year, year round. And for all of us as cooperators, we just simply look at winter preparedness now. We don't have an off fire season this year round. So that defensible space needs to be maintained. Be prepared at your home, make sure your family's prepared, medications, animals, if you're medically fragile, if you have a partner or something. And moreover, as accountability, if you do evacuate, who can you call so that we have accountability? Like I said, it's a pleasure to serve you folks. I truly am sorry for the loss of your homes. But my crews and these guys really did everything we could and we just, our hearts go out to you folks that may have lost your homes. And we'll be looking at initial damage estimate tomorrow, working with city and county officials to identify those by APN numbers and do our very best to get you folks back into a quick recovery effort as soon as we can.
Clear Lake Firefighters rock!
Thanks Chief, just a second Sheriff. One of the things that the chief mentioned is, we want to get you back to your homes, but we need to make sure that it's safe first. You need to understand that all the power lines are down. I just spoke with a member from PGE, they've removed a lot of the power lines on the main egresses routes in and out, but that's for emergency personnel, emergency traffic to get in and out because they still have an active incident, something they're working with. One of the things we're going to need to do folks is to get some inspectors out there before we can repopulate, to look to see that the power poles are not compromised, they're not going to fall down on you when you're trying to move in or a tree or other things that are threatening. And we need to do that again before we can get you to back into your homes. So it is going to take a little bit of time, we apologize for that, but we don't want to have a loss of life and I hope you can appreciate that. It's absolutely critical. Next, I'd like to call up CHP Commander. He's going to talk to us about routes in and out and the surrounding areas. Thank you Lieutenant.
My name is Hector Frederson, I'm the CHP Commander here in Kelseyville. And boy, it's very painful to see this. This is what, we're going into our third year of really hard, harsh times with fires. But the CHP's role here is work very closely with our local law enforcement, with public safety. And I know the big question now that I'm hearing is, how do we get in? How do we get out of here? Right now in Lake County, there are no state highways that are closed, at least here in Lake County. So you can also leave if you're trying to get to Napa. State Route 29, south goes all the way through, through Napa. There's been questions about, is that the best way to get to the Bay Area? I would encourage you probably to go out State Route 20 to Interstate 5 and going south towards Sacramento because the fires are dynamic, they could change. And so I would encourage you to go in that direction. If you're going up 20 towards 101, it is open, but again Mendocino County has fires going on and they have a very dynamic situation going on in Willett. So again, if you're trying to get out of here, I would go east. That would be the safest way and the most prudent way to get out of here. We have additional officers working with CHP with Clear Lake Police Department and we're here to serve you. So thank you.
Lieutenant Sully with the Clear Lake Police Department. He's been working very hard to see that we're keeping patrols up, especially in those evacuated areas and we're augmenting staff that are able to do that. And again, thanks to the sheriff for that, our board of supervisors are well represented here. We just, we're all here for you.
Thank you. From the moment we got the call, we coordinated with outside agencies to start the evacuations. We sent out 4,900 messages to folks in the area to get them out. And we had road closures and things like that to keep opposing traffic out of the area so we can expedite that evacuation. Since the time of the evacuation, there's been an order, NICSILs have been sent out. The order is that it is a disaster area so that people are not allowed to be in there. However, some folks did not leave, they refused to leave after the evacuation order was given. We can't force those folks to leave, however, we can't allow them to meander around in the area. So if they are, we're telling them to go back inside their house, otherwise they are subject to arrest under 409.5 of the penal code if they're walking around. It's unfortunate, that's not what we want to do, but we also are trying our best to keep your properties and your residences safe from looters and things like that. We had officers since this evacuation began, started around the clock patrols and we've had seven or eight officers, we've had various departments from Fish and Game, Lakeport Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, the DA's office, all helping us try to patrol the area and keep riffraff out of there and things like that. We're having additional 13 officers out there tonight working around the clock. So I know that there's other folks here, so thank you.
Thank you Sheriff Martin.
Thank you. Going last, everybody's covered everything I want to talk about and they've covered it very thoroughly. One thing that was told me a couple of years ago by the California Director of Emergency Services is that in this, we are in it for a marathon, not a sprint. So one thing that we've learned over the last couple of fire seasons is that we're going to be inconvenienced, as Mayor Perdok talked about early in the meeting, and we're going to be out of our homes much longer than any of us would like. Please bear with us, we're doing everything in our power to get you home as soon as we can, but we also want to make sure that it is safe before you go home. As Mayor Perdok talked about, there's a lot of unknown hazards out there, there's trees that could fall at any given time, there's dust and hazardous materials there if people are allowed back in there and they kick up that dust, particularly around vulnerable populations such as children, elderly people with pre-existing conditions, they can be, they can have damage or injuries inflicted on them that they may not know about for a very long time. So we want to do everything we can to make sure that it is safe for you. As everyone's heard, we are in the midst of a disaster that's been declared statewide by the governor, which means we are competing with resources throughout the state. When we're making requests, we also have to keep in mind that there are other areas throughout the state that are requesting oftentimes the same resources that we are. With that in mind, I've been in contact with Senator McGuire and Cecilia Curry's office to make sure that our requests aren't ignored, that we don't get forgotten up here. We've staffed up some shelters, as was mentioned earlier, down at Twin Pine Casino, he's not here, but I want to thank Moke Simon and the Middletown Rancheria for opening up Twin Pine Casino once again in our time of need. He's not here, but thank you Moke. With that, we had another briefing with approximately 200 people down there tonight so we wouldn't overcrowd this room, it turned out that was a very good idea. And we have on request a mobile cell tower to help provide additional cell service. For those of you that have noticed a decrease in cell service, I've noticed it personally, so we want to make sure that we have some of that connectivity available to us. We've also ordered up some basic showers and other lifesaving needs. The Salvation Army's provided meals for tonight, they're going to continue to provide meals. The American Red Cross is staffing the shelter. Our public health department has provided some medical staff to attend to people's needs and our behavioral health department is providing some counseling services for those who seek it. As with everyone else, my heart goes out, this is a tough time, this is becoming, it's not a fun thing. Anytime this happens, it's very, very difficult for all of us. Keep in mind that we are going to do whatever we can to get you back home, but get you back home as safely and as quickly as we possibly can. Thank you.
Last on my agenda, but certainly not least, a man who's had a lot of experience unfortunately in dealing with this and helping to lead our county through it, is Rob Ruhm? Hear him? Is Robert? No. Well, I apologize, he's down in Middletown probably helping drive the folks up down there. So what do we do next? I think what we need to do folks is prepare for being displaced for a few days, maybe as much as a week. Make those plans as you can now, I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but I think it'd be better to have a plan that you can cancel and come home sooner than to not have the plan at all and be very struggling and not knowing what you're going to do next. So how do you want to close this Sheriff? You want to take questions? Okay. Please, please come on. For those of you that have been evacuated and have insurance policies, your homeowner's insurance policies, renter's insurance policies, I encourage you to check with your insurance brokers to find out if there's a benefit available to you to stay in a hotel. A lot of people think that they have to lose their home, but if you're under evacuation, a lot of those policies have provisions where they will pay to put you up at a hotel. Hotels are going to become very much in high demand, I will tell you, with everything that's going on throughout the state. So if you haven't done that and you have that option available to you, I encourage you to check with your insurance brokers and if you can get into somewhere, please do so.
And thank you very much for bringing that up. Yes, if you are in a mandated evacuation area, most policies, check with your agent if you're not familiar with yourself, that will cover for your housing either in hotel or while you're displaced. If you lost your home, check with your insurance agent, if you have that coverage, you might have coverage for the rent to be covered if you find another rental somewhere. Questions?
If we know when, if we lost our home, a lot of us don't know, how do you find out?
Gentlemen?
Do you want to know my address?
The problem is, much like we experienced in the Valley Fire and the Clayton Fire, the fire and the wind conditions were such that one house might be gone and the house next door to it is still there. So it's really difficult to say and I don't want to set any false expectations.
Chief?
And we've been trying to do some preliminary stuff today. Tomorrow we'll be working with the city and the county on the APN numbers, do we call initial damage estimate? So we can tie the APN numbers with the firm address, the confirmed property owners. We're hoping to have that done. Mike, we look maybe 24 hours should have a kind of a good listing and working with the city, we're hopefully to have that list as complete as possible and have that posted for you to be able to come and check out.
Where's it going to be posted?
We'll actually work with the city and have it posted to the city and potentially maybe look at some of the website opportunities to do that. We'll work with the city, what's going to be best for access to everybody that may or may not have a computer or iPhone capabilities.
Chief, can you repeat the question? There's people in the side that isn't here.
Oh, yeah, they want to know where it was going to be posted, if you've lost your home or not. And we'll look at both the newer technology of a computer-based as well as the manual as far as having a list of those APNs and those property owners. So if you're a renter of the property, we wouldn't potentially have that information, we would just be notifying the property owner who in turn would hopefully notify their renter. Yes ma'am?
You're on the Orchard Chores and the Villages. You're on either side.
No, it didn't, no, it stayed well to the north, or excuse me, to the south and southwest sections. And...
We were just asked where the fire direction.
So if I can get Jay and Mike and Mike Ciancio, they'll kind of give a description of the fire pattern, where it started and what's been impacted right now. And that'll give you a better idea of what areas have been impacted now. Mind you, we have done no initial damage estimate of what property losses there, but we can give you a general idea of what geographical locations were impacted by the fire.
As Chief Ciancio explained, in the beginning, the fire started close to the Elam Colony. It was less than a quarter mile from the Elam Colony. Not knowing which way the wind was going to blow, one way it would blow, one way for a little while and then turn and blow back the other way. So we made a large box, as it was called, for those evacuations. Lake Village Estates, Orchard Chores were part of that box. They have not been damaged, the fire didn't get near those, they're a good half mile from those areas. So I would hope that we can get those repopulated fairly soon, but stay tuned for that.
Have you heard how the fire started?
It's under investigation at this time, we haven't had a chance to do that. Again, our priorities have been life safety and suppression.
How much is still burning?
Probably the most active part of the fire would be out toward Windflower Point, North Drive.
If I were, I mean, it did no damage to the whole streets where I did that, why can't we pull back?
Power's still shut off and until we know that the fire's contained, we're not going to let anybody get back in.
I have the same question because the fire started according to you guys at the Elam Minium, went up Sulfur Bank and out far from Windflower.
Yes.
So there was nothing that happened from section to 17. Now as far as being out of power, we've been out of power out there on time. Now you know, a bird lands on the power line or out of power, that doesn't bother me in the least. If there's nothing that happens in that area, why are we going to be allowed to go back?
Folks, I understand you're emotional. I understand you're emotional, but flirting out, we want to try to keep some...
It's not just emotions, it's cause.
Sir, please, I can hear you, but raise your hand because someone in the back or over here may have the same question, but they can't hear what you're asking. So we want to have everybody get a chance to speak, we want to have everyone get a chance to hear the answer. And just yelling out isn't helping. So the answer for, how do I get back to my house? We're trying to answer that. And that is, as soon as the power's back on, you will be notified either through NICSIL or through other communication. Sheriff, Chief? So if you don't have NICSIL, we can help you get that on your phone. And let's see, yes ma'am?
A lot of us have no internet whatsoever. I have NICSIL, I can get the notifications, but I can't...
Okay. The question is, a lot of us don't have internet, that is absolutely true. We've lost some of the facilities and infrastructure that provide that. A lot of Wi-Fi has gone down, so they're trying to get that back in. Chief, did we have one portable unit try to restore some of that internet access?
We ordered a... We did order a power Wi-Fi point, however, we have not received that yet. But just, let me be clear, some of your questions are absolutely valid. We really want to get you into your homes, but we have a large area that is a disaster area. We also have areas that are still hot and potentially on fire that we haven't been able to access yet. The other problem is, if we're going to try to protect your properties, we can't have people just go into these areas. We need to keep it all out. And I understand that it's absolutely an inconvenience, we can appreciate that very much. But you also have to understand the tough job that we have to do to try to maintain your property and your belongings and the safety of your property. If we have people wandering around in a disaster area, we don't know, we, all of you folks may be great folks and not have a problem, but we can't tell when we're driving around looking at those folks, who good folks and who are not good folks and those sort of things. So we have to, we have to deal with that situation, so please understand that. So we have to deal with that situation. So please understand that.
Just a second. I got a question from reporter Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, Willie. Willie, we love you too. Can we get some numbers on acreage and containment?
Question is on acreage and containment for Chief Sepeda.
We're looking about 2,500 acres and as a ballpark, we maybe talked about 5%. And when you look at containment, that means that it's 100% out. It's mopped in, 300 to 500 foot in. So when you look at those small numbers, it's those areas, 5% of it's guaranteed it's not going to rekindle. There's a lot of tree hazards. A lot of other hazards are associated with it. So we're looking right now about 2,500 acres, about 5% containment. That'll definitely increase through the night. Tomorrow, when we hopefully have some aircraft, be able to get a better aerial view of it. We'll take advantage of the firefighting efforts during the night. Our weather recovers. We have lower temps, higher relative humidity. And also the CAL FIRE number for general information regarding the fire. Erica 707. So what you'll find tonight as well as tomorrow is when we're doing the overhaul and cleaning that fires, a lot of times we do a firing operation. Just because we have a big new plume of fire and smoke, doesn't mean it's a new fire. It's a firing operation. It may be burning out an island. It's actually secure and locked that in. An additional phone number for CAL FIRE information, 967-4207. Yes? And there's actually a person that answers the phone.
Are you expecting more aerial assets tomorrow?
Yeah, you know, when we look at the devastation in... Oh, are we going to look at more aerial support for tomorrow? By all means, but what happens is that when we are scheduled to get aircraft, if a new incident breaks, the priority a lot of times is to shift that resource, that new priority. Other times when we have aircraft is that if any of the incidents have life safety issues, we're losing homes and losing people, we can lose our aircraft to that. So later in the day, because of the activity in Sonoma, Napa and Menoecino County, is that we end up with a couple of months ago, I'm not sure you've seen in the paper, Jerry, which is kind of this hybrid helicopter, looks like a praying mantis, was stationed in Sonoma County. And then we got what they refer to as a LAT, which is a large air tanker that was that large unit, which really secured one of the larger areas we were concerned about on North Drive and Fire Road 1. So it was able to button up that one session that really was creating a lot of grief for us. So based upon the operations for tomorrow, our winds are supposed to taper off, be back to what our normal is. The wind event that came up on the 8th, that came up yesterday morning, we had kind of sustained 8 to 10 mile an hour with gusts up to 30 miles an hour. When these fires broke throughout Northern California, as we talked about, we had sustained winds of 30 with gusts of 60. So the aircraft definitely, like I said, as long as there's no new incidents, then we should see additional aircraft on our fire for tomorrow. Yes?
Chief, is the bridge above Pine Dale on fire?
It's already burned through there. There's a lot of mop up there. So there's a lot of ambers and stuff and we got to watch for the rolling materials. So there's still a lot of smoke and the reason the smoke hasn't settled down in the valley is the winds kind of carried it around. But we're going to probably find in the next week as that wind ceases in the area, all those other fires like we've seen earlier last month, is that smoke's going to kind of come in and settle with this little microclimate that we have in Lake County. So we're free of smoke now, but it'll definitely kind of start socking in probably towards the end of the week.
Gentlemen in the back on the aisle? Question is related to pets and how do we get back in there and to check on them. This is really a difficult question to try to answer. And that is, we're trying to do the best we can. Animal control was impacted pretty early on in this incident and we were trying to get some help from SPCA and other animal organizations. And I want to thank them for all the help they've been to us. But here's the thing, as Chief pointed out, Lieutenant Sully pointed out, I hate to say it, but they've gotten pretty good at this, folks. These gentlemen in front of you have gotten very good over the last couple of years in dealing with these big fires and trying to keep homes that didn't burn safe from looting. I want to point out, last year when we had the fire, the Clayton Fire, I think when everything was said and done, we had a burglary from looting. And I think that's pretty spectacular and that's what we want to do here. We want to keep your homes safe so you can get back to them safely. Ma'am, you've had your hand up for a while. Ma'am, if I could, I just got to cut to the chase. If you've been identified and you're in an evacuation area, it's because the fire department set the parameters of where they needed to set that evacuation based on the fire characteristics and fire behavior. They didn't know if it was going to come your way or not, in other words. So that's what they did and we can't retract that until we have better containment. Is that right, fire guys? Okay. Then you can't go back to your house. And I'm sorry, but we just have to say that. People that are going in or milling around, as the chief pointed out, are subject to arrest. What is the curfew? 7 to 7? Yes. So people that are out in your neighborhoods between the hours of 7 at night till 7 in the morning are subject to arrest. We're going to keep this locked down and we're going to keep the properties safe. Yes, ma'am, in the black sweater. What I... That number that the chief gave you for CAL FIRE?
Oh.
If you Google CAL FIRE.org and check active fires, it will give you... The information will pop up. If you're out of the area and you have internet, you should be able to get that. Yes, ma'am? She'd like to thank us for all her efforts and I want to thank you guys. Chief Sepeda? Chief's been working on this, working through Red Cross for food. The question was, where are we having food? Where would the showers be? I don't have that information. Sheriff, do you have that information? I apologize. Sheriff Martin has that information. The shelters have opened up. The shelter at Twin Pine is serving meals. They served the lunch and dinner tonight and they have plans for serving meals throughout the stay of people there as do... As is the case at the... As is the case at Grace and Evangelical Free Church. We've ordered up showers for people that are staying at the shelters. And like I said earlier, we're competing with a lot of others in the state for a very finite number of resources. But we're hopeful to have an answer on these showers within the next day or two. Just a second. Yes, ma'am?
I'm on board directors of the SPCA and we are in collaboration with LEAF. And I advise any of you who are worried about your animals to call 707-263-0278, which is the animal control in Lakeport. Tell them your address, exactly how many animals you have, what your situation is, and they will do their best to get a team out there to rescue your animals as soon as it is safe.
And the clearly animal control's been doing the same. Yes, sir? Question was, what is the chance of it spreading to the Highlands area? And at this point, they're fighting their best, right, chief? It's been in the Highlands area and that's what we're trying to contain.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'm not going to say that it's not going to because that can bite me in the rear. We continue to fight that 24 hours a day. We try to make most of the progress during the nighttime. We had a recovery from the weather. There is a firefight going on 24 hours a day. And we move and shift the resources based upon the potential threat of that. Everything is really kind of based upon our weather and we've seen that lately. We can have some gusts, winds come up. We have contingency plans with additional resources. As we've talked throughout the night, you know, we literally have hundreds of thousands of active fires going as far as acreage. And we've made those requests. One of the things we look at is reflex time. So when we make those requests, some of those come from Los Angeles. Some of those are coming from Arizona, other states. By the time they get here, they need to have a rest time. So that means all the resources that were on the initial attack are there for two or three days. So the requests have been put in for one of the fires in Sonoma. There was a request for 100 strike teams. That's 500 engines and 1,500 firefighters. So we're competing against those. So our troops continue to be out there 24 hours a day. Working with our cooperators at the state, federal and local level, we put in those requests and we'll continue to fight and as they come in, then our crews will get breaks and we'll rotate them out. So we will do everything within our power to make sure that it doesn't progress what we've established perimeters. Those areas are patrolled. We, you know, have patrols on them 24 hours a day looking at every possibility of that fire spreading to new areas.
Is... Can you tell us the direction that the fire is traveling? Is it going northeast? Is it going north away from Clear Lake, northeast away from Clear Lake? Or is it traveling towards...
You know, it's based on a lot of it on the topography. She wanted to know the direction of the fire. So today we had, pardon me, some different areas that the fire was backing down off of Sulfur Bank, North Drive area, down into the fire roads. Within a period of time, the wind had shifted. So it's really moment by moment. Right now, the winds are calm. Our temps are out. So the fire's really not doing other than kind of backing down some hills, kind of creeping around. But those are the ones we want to take action on now so that there isn't the probability. Normally, fire burns faster uphill than downhill. And in our chimneys and our chutes, which are kind of draws that go up through valleys and through canyons. But as we've seen over these past six years, is that we've seen fire go as fast downhill as it does uphill. So like I said, what happens first thing in the morning is it's nice and cool. Fire behavior starts to get more active in the afternoon as it gets warmer. And then that inversion that lifts, you can see the smoke kind of push down. When that smoke lifts off is where we really look at those increased activities and we're shifting stuff around within the different parts. And when we take a big fire like that, it's like eating an elephant one bite at a time. There's manageable span of controls within each segment of that with specific resources that are augmented by the air and the dozers and other types of resources.
Yes, ma'am? I can't hear a question because people are talking. Thanks, Fred. I heard her. Here's the thing. If you're causing a disturbance, I'm going to go to the people who are being respectful. Okay? Yes, ma'am, your question. We have been using Lake County Transit to shuttle people from, I think, the Clear Lake City Hall, what are the other areas, chief, where the shuttle's been working? Come on up. The question was, how are they getting to these evacuation centers if they don't have transportation?
We have been working with Lake County Transit. We have had the Lake County Transit respond to Redwood Park, Austin Park, the community center here, those areas. And we've actually had them patrol Walmart area. If you need a ride, we can certainly take care of that for you, get you over to the evac centers. Remember, there's two right now. It's Twin Pines Casino, I believe is full. And then the other one is the Grace Church over in Kelseyville. On Conocda Drive. So we can get you over there through Lake County Transit. Live Oak Drive.
Yes, sir, in the back, red jacket. Yes, sir. You with the hand, your hand up. His comment was, if you're having trouble getting connection with Wi-Fi, turn your Wi-Fi off and your data plan will kick in and you'll get service. We're trying our best. Folks, if I can just point something out, just a second. We've got folks in this room. I see their faces. They've lost their homes. They're not bouncing up and down. They're not being disrespectful. They're pretty sure their home is gone. They're pretty sure everything they had in their home is gone. Their pets are probably gone as well. This is really devastating. So we need to have some decorum. We need to have some courtesy. We'll try to answer your questions as quickly as we can, but we need to show some respect for everyone in here. Just so I can point out, the area in the Park Woods, the streets are what we used to call the Gobi Desert. Thank God, your homes are still there. The area heading toward the Goose Neck, it looks like it's just a devastation zone. Entire neighborhoods are gone. And people are hurting because of that. And we need to come together as we have in the past and be a gracious and helping and supporting community and help our neighbors. Because we're going to overcome this, one property at a time, one neighbor at a time, helping each other out. So let's be respectful and I'll try to get to your questions as quickly as I can. Yes, ma'am, in the pink sweatshirt. If you can check, the school will put out a notice of whether school's in or not. I apologize, we don't have a representative officially here. But I see hounds bouncing around. I see our school bus and our Lake County Office of Ed Superintendent Brock Falkenberg is here. So congratulations, folks. We got a really good turnout. Can you guys help address that for Lake County Schools and Conocda Unified? They weren't on my list of people to call out. I'll try to get to you as soon as I can. So Conocda Unified School District will be closed tomorrow and it will be a day-to-day decision as to when to reopen Conocda Unified. When that decision is made, schools will be ready. There will be buses available for those that are still temporarily dislocated. Middletown Schools was closed today. They will be open tomorrow. The CERN Schools were closed today due to a lack of electricity. They will be open tomorrow.
Hey, thanks everybody for being here. Just want to let you know that when we do have an idea of when we're going to open, which we're hoping is going to be as soon as possible, we are also going to look at displaced folks. And that's something that we're going to be talking a little bit about tomorrow at the school district. So as many of you may remember, Conocda Unified was transporting Valley Fire students back and forth that were displaced here. We were actually running them to Middletown Unified. So if you're out there at one of these shelters, we will either look at mutual aid with our other school districts or do it ourselves. But in either case, we'll try to get out there and get as much area covered as we can.
Thank you, Dana. Just a second. I unintentionally put some folks off over here. Yes, sir, in the red shirt. You're right, you in the men... Clear Lake Park within the Park Woods in the streets from 2nd to 17th, that area? Or along the Lakeshore Drive to the Goose Neck area? I have no idea where your place is, sir. Chief, there's been no fire activity in that area yet, but it is within a half a mile? Okay. So in the Park Woods, it's about a half a mile. Just a second. Yes, ma'am, in the back. Not you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, in the back. Question is, are we in jeopardy for many fires from the south area of our county? And that answer is, we're just focusing on what is in our county. The thing that I think the fire folks have pointed out very well is we have limited resources right now in the state of California. We need to recognize that high population centers in Sonoma County, meaning high population areas, have been devastated in the Santa Rosa area. Fires have been burning rampant, if you haven't been able to see the news, in Sonoma County and taking out neighborhoods, coals, large businesses that frankly, I have a hard time getting my head around, that those are now gone because of that fire. Napa County is experiencing the same. And in these higher population areas, they're going to divert fire suppression equipment to those areas to save those lives. Sadly, we live in a small town and so we'll get it as they come available. Okay? Yes, sir?
Since there is no real damage from the Second to Seventeenth Street, even though you don't allow us to go back to their homes, is there going to be some provision for at least the local residents to go in and get something to live off of for a few days? This is what I got from my house when I left last night.
I understand. I kind of have the same problem. So the issue is, as soon as we can get you back in, we will try to be getting you back in. As I stated earlier, try to prepare yourself for being displaced for a few days.
All right. Just let me back in for an hour, and I'll go get my stuff.
Sir, it is too problematic, and logistics would be overwhelming to get everybody in for a few minutes. We're working a fire. It's within a half a mile, that area. As the chief pointed out, we need to think of this with, you know, some common sense and understanding the dynamic. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, in the hat. Right, your hat.
Where can we donate items?
Where can we donate items?
Like clothes?
At this point, and going from what we experienced in the Valley Fire, please keep your donations. We may need them later, but right now, we don't believe we have a place to store those or to start getting them out. Dewey, Sheriff?
I know everybody has the best intentions when they want to donate items, but I'm here to tell you that the donation of items becomes a second disaster for us to handle. We get overburdened with a lot of things that people donate. A lot of those things are not frankly of any use to anybody, even though people think they might be useful. They just take up somebody's time who could be used elsewhere in helping get you guys back home. So that takes up city resources. It takes up county resources, trying to keep track of that stuff. It sounds greedy, and it sounds like a money grab, but honestly, during these situations, money, gift cards, gas cards, those types of things are the best thing, if you want to make a donation for people in need. The gentleman over here in the tank top, I'd love to give him a gift card so he could go down and buy a sweatshirt. He'd probably rather buy his own sweatshirt with a gift card than have something that was given to, given into a trailer. So with donations in mind, we strongly encourage, if you want to make a donation, a cash donation. I know that a lot of, a lot of people are strapped for money, even if it's $5, it can make a difference to somebody. So if you want to make a difference, cash donations, gift cards, those types of things.
That's a very good idea, and that was very helpful in our last events. Yes, ma'am, in the black.
I just have a question. Are you guys going to be able to reroute the van going to the park?
It just so happens. I've been having a person waiting for this topic to be brought up. We have our postmaster from the Clear Lake Post Office to talk to us.
Good evening, folks. And once again, from the bottom of my heart, we also feel very deeply about your losses, for those of you that have them. As with previous fires, the devastated areas, all the mail has been routed to the Clear Lake Post Office. I've been with, in touch with all our district personnel since very early this morning. I know many of you have medications that you need. It's my suggestion to you to contact your doctors, your medical people, to go ahead and get those medications to you in the mail, and we will give them to you. The only requirement is, for those individuals who were affected by the areas that are evacuated, you will need an ID. We can only give you your mail, not for the household. So if you have other individuals that are with you within that household, please make sure to have them bring their IDs as well. Of course, minor children are excluded. And for the duration of the evacuation, that's going to be the plan. We'll have a place laid out in the front lobby where you can get in line, and we'll take you at our Dutch door. Please bring your ID. We'll get your mail to you.
My name is Dr. Bloom. I'm a nurse practitioner at the VA Clinic, and I'm here in case there's some veterans that don't have their medications so that I can facilitate you getting them.
If you have, if you're a veteran and you need some medications, please see this young lady. You're going to be sticking around a little bit.
Yeah.
And your name is what?
I'm Dr. Bloom.
Dr. Bloom. So Dr. Bloom will be here to help veterans get their medications. Yes, ma'am.
When you know, when you know about, know when the fire will be out?
You'll be notified when we're going to be opening up any particular area, and I don't know the answer to that. That would be up to the fire behavior, and when we, when we know, we'll let you all know. Yes, ma'am.
We talked about mail, but not any FedEx, or yes, or...
That's out of my jurisdiction.
That's, that's not his job. So my, my answer would be call FedEx. If you're expecting a parcel, call, you know, UBS, and let them know that you're displaced in an area where you could have it dropped. Yes, ma'am.
Is there road?
Just a second, sir.
Is there road over St. Golden Avenue, Tubbs Lane, and Tri-Cityway over...
Lieutenant?
Tubbs Lane.
Is Tubbs Lane open? I don't believe it is. There was some significant fire damage in that area, so probably not. That's why we're requesting that you be routed to the east on I-5 to head down to the Bay Area. Yes, sir, in the back.
Finally. What I want to find out is where are they going to physically post the information? I don't, I'm new here. I've only been here two months. I don't know the area.
All right. I believe the chief said, and fire chief said that would be on City Hall at the...
I did not hear City Hall. All I heard is when he posted.
Okay, yeah, we've, we've got a lot of people talking, and unfortunately, things get missed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If our area becomes mandatory, will we receive the NICSIL only, or will we have also official partner boards?
If your area becomes an evacuation, mandatory evacuation, you'll receive the NICSIL, and chief and sheriff, I'll kind of defer to you, you'll receive the NICSIL notification. There may be law enforcement driving down your road. I don't know that you, we may have time, depending on the area and the event, to actually knock door to door. So the answer is, if you're in an area that is, what's the term, Chief Cepeda, for evacuation?
Advisory.
Advisory. If you're in an advisory area, I'm a little tired. I've been up since two this morning, most like you guys. That means get your pictures together, get your legal papers together, get the clothing that you're going to need ready to go, so you can quickly get it into your car and get out of there. Okay, so that's an advisory. Mandatory means it is highly recommended you need to go. And as a guy who's also evacuated, these guys up here, and the men and women that are working for them, they're putting their lives on the line. I just want to, I had an experience with the Rocky Fire where people literally came in smelling of smoke. Several firefighters risked their lives to get them out because they didn't leave when they were asked to. And we knew that they were there, or I didn't, the fire department knew that they were there, and they went to extreme lengths to save those folks' lives before their houses were lost. Okay? So please. And if you know people that haven't left yet, can they still leave if they would like? So just because you've decided to stay and shelter in place and want to leave later, you're welcome to do that in a nice orderly way, and that would be very much appreciated. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Do you guys need any volunteers?
Right now, we have been doing very well with volunteers. Thank you very much. I might recommend maybe at one of the evacuation centers. I know that they're, they always need help. They're getting food, water, and that kind of thing, the folks that have been evacuated. Yes, ma'am.
You sent one, Lake County Drive, Good St. Louis, devastated. Are there any homes saved?
There are a few homes, as I, as I mentioned, and as we learned in the Rocky Fire and the Clayton Fire, and I understand, and I, we don't know. But what we, what we've seen is homes that you wouldn't expect to survive a fire of this magnitude are still standing. The wind directions, they change, as the fire personnel have brought up. The heat and temperatures change. So some homes that you think should be there no longer are, and other homes right next door are standing. We really don't know. That's why they're going to try to do that good work to get the APN numbers noticed at the City Hall, so you can come down there, check. It's right across from Austin Park. Park there, let's try not to inundate the parking lot, because that is one of our command centers for, for this event. So we need to have the emergency people being able to come in and out. But if you park at the Austin Park, walk across the street, you can check the windows at the front of City Hall. Yes, ma'am. I'll get you in the back. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So like...
Right.
We can't find somebody, like we're trying to get a customer, maybe that like lives out in the U.S. like I work with a little...
Do you have a specific question? Because I've got people with specific questions. If you're trying to look for somebody, you can contact, I would contact the hospitals.
I've been trying.
Okay.
I've been waiting for you.
What I would recommend is you contact our local fire department, give them her address, and they can go check. Okay? Yes, sir, in the back.
My name's Pastor Kelly, and I'm from the local church. I'm a harvest fellowship and fourteen stars at 6201A. We're concerned that there's going to be people that have no place to go, and we'd like to offer that to them.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. So you might want to post that on City Hall for people who can see and check, check that location out. Yes, sir.
Is the restoration of the electricity really going to be a beneficiary on letting people go back? Because I feel like the power link is set over there. The power line, electricity's gone out a million times.
Here's the thing. In some of the areas, the power lines are completely non-existent. So they've had to reroute power. Now, I'm not the expert. Do we have the, is the gentleman from PG&E still here? Yes, no? But what he said he was going to try to do is restore that power as quickly as possible. But we need to make sure that the power, when they energize those lines, is safe to do. We don't want to start additional fires because some properties have been compromised. Folks, thank goodness, no firefighters were hurt when a big pine tree fell on a piece of equipment. These things are very unstable. They're dealing in a very dangerous environment. We recognize that those things may not exist where you live, but we still need to make sure that you're safe before we repopulate, as the chief said. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I just want to say thank you, God, to, you know, everything that's been going on. You know, I represent the First Assembly of God behind Foods. And if anybody needs prayer, whatever's going on, if you lost your home, if you lost somebody, if you just need to come in because you're having, it's going bad for you, please come. We will pray for you at Behind Foods, First Assembly of God.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
Would you, uh, number for UBS, please, department to call when we could go back up to the park? But I couldn't get through. Did you say there was a Cal Fire order to call, which I didn't go out?
Chief, 967, everybody write this down. I'm going to say it a few times. 967...
4207.
Thank you.
Chief, also for the city EOC, you can call 994-7246. Of course, if you need some, some help or assistance, that we can send up a request to the county EOC.
And the county's EOC number is 263-3450. If you call the county with, with a question about the city, an issue within the city, we'll refer you to the city and vice versa. If you called the city EOC and it has to do with something in the county, they'll refer you to us. So if you feel like you're getting a runaround, we're not giving you a runaround. We want to make sure that you get to the people that have the right answers for your particular situation.
Very good point. Thank you, Sheriff. Yes, ma'am.
Did those members, you posted at City Hall versus...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's also posted on our electronic signboard.
If you're familiar with the Lake County Fire Department location on Olympic Drive, it's posted on their signboard as well. We're going to start wrapping this up. Couple more questions. Yes, ma'am.
KTSC 8821 is going pretty much around the clock providing information. Does it have a call-in number, and if you can call and be helpful to other people that are here?
Folks, if you could just, there is a public information on our local radio FM station out of Lakeport. So you're going around the clock and posting information, or...
Each program is making...
Okay, making announcements?
Someone's recording it here at the place that I have it in the clock, if they can. The number to call in for KTSC is 263-3435. It's also streaming online if you do have internet, and you can find that at ktsc.org.
Thank you.
Great resource.
Thank you. This is my last question. This cell right here, yes.
How many days at school?
How many days at school?
Till school.
Till school. Dana, one more? No school tomorrow. You got Columbus Day plus one. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you for your help tonight.